In to order, we will start with the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have.
What's happening?
A couple of announcements. The Grafton Boy Scouts Troop 106 will be holding a recycling day this Saturday, September 24th, from nine to one in the lower parking lot at St. Mary's Parish in North Grafton, located at 17 Waterville Street. They'll be accepting scrap metal and used clothing, which you can drop off for free, or you can schedule a pickup for a small fee. No hazardous materials or electronics. Please, to learn more or schedule a pickup, please contact scoutmasters.troop106@troopmasters.e-mail. The 43rd Annual Harvest Fair and Apple Pie Social is on Sunday, September 25th, from 11 to 3, at 30 Grafton Common. The event features games for kids, a variety of food, a yard sale, and pie, 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 buy the slice or whole to bring home. The pies sold out early last year, so don't miss out. There are no public hearings, and the first thing on the agenda are some appointments. So it looks like we have a couple of people looking to be appointed to the Tufts University Institutional Biosafety Committee. We have David on Zoom and Harvey in person, I believe. We can start with David. Welcome, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving?
Okay, great. First, thanks a lot for inviting me to the board and have a few minutes to talk to you. And I am a resident of Grafton for the last 16 years. And I came to Grafton from New York, where I was working on a H-1B visa. I was recruited from Nairobi, Kenya. That's where I used to work in science research. And I moved to Grafton back in 2006. And I've been working in the same line of work. And while I was here, I also did my grad school. And I went to Worcester State University. I graduated with a degree in biotechnology, master's in biotechnology. And I have worked with several universities. And I hope you have my resume, so that I don't go too much into the details, which are already there. And so, and the last, towards the end, when I changed more into biosafety, was in the last six years, when I moved from Harvard School of Public Health, on the wetlands science, and moved to Dana Faber Cancer Institute, where I work as a biosafety officer. And I am very much involved in the functions of IBC there. And for me, it was really a privilege to have this opportunity to volunteer as a community member for the, my town, Grafton, and be able to represent that. And I feel I am very well versed with the functions of IBC. And I would like to be able to represent this town and with the best interests of the environment and the public health in this town.
Very nice, thank you. Does the board have any questions? Okay, hearing none, I can take a motion.
I move the board vote to appoint David Muayindegwa as the Community Representative on Tufts University Institutional Biosafety Committee.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have Harvey Kimsey. Is Harvey here? Okay. I don't see him, so we can circle back if he shows up. Up next, we have several election workers, so I can take a motion for them.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Do I need to stay or?
You do not need to stay.
You know, you need to stay for the entire meeting.
It is a good time, but you do not.
Thank you very much.
I can make the motion?
Sure.
I move the board vote to appoint Donna Wenk, Sharon Kelly, Danielle Decker, Jennifer Valente, Linda Hassinger, Nancy Piccone, and Maria Sheldon as election workers for the town of Grafton.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. And then, up next, we have some appointments. We have the Deputy Chief of Police, Mr. Neil Minardi. If you guys would like to come up and say anything?
Yeah, if you could come up and have a seat for a second?
Like I told you in the hall, don't touch anything, okay?
You want me to lead off, Chief?
Yeah.
Okay. So the Chief, Neil and I have been talking about making this change at the Police Department for quite a long time now, talking about pros and cons and developing the organization of, the organizational chart of the department. And so we had settled on creating the position of Deputy Chief with the added duties that the Police Department now has with post, which is part of the Police Reform Act passed by the Mass Legislature and signed by the Governor. And also accreditation and just the general growth of the town of Grafton. We felt that this was the appropriate time to do that and could think of no better person to fill that position than Lieutenant Minardi. So we will be making that appointment effective October 3rd, which I think is the first Monday in October. And I would assume we'll have some kind of a ceremony, ceremonial pinning type thing.
That's correct.
As soon as we're able to procure the things that we need to do that from the vendors, because everything's, as you know, takes forever. So Chief, did you want to say anything?
No, I just, as Evan said, you know, we've been discussing this for a while and pandemic and all, and we did have quite a shortage for a while. We added three more police officers, actually with the two we'll be hiring, it'll be up to seven since, pretty much since May, for a department of 23, that's quite significant. And Lieutenant Minardi had, I charged him with supervising the hiring and with the staff of field training officers and the, my command staff. They interviewed the candidates and they made outstanding choices. You know, most of them were already academy trained, so we're very lucky. People want to come to Grafton, and I think that's part, mostly because of the staff and the officers that work here in Grafton. We have a good reputation. As a matter of fact, one of the officers that just graduated from the academy told me that, and I don't think she, she was saying it just to be heard, but the instructors knew of the Grafton Police Department, and they were impressed with how the equipment we have, the staff that we have, and the things that we do. So, and that's in a small measure due to Lieutenant Minardi and the rest of the staff. And as Evan said, what we'd like to do is come, well, he didn't really say, but it's in your letter.
Yep.
Come in the future. We'd be looking at other promotions, and that's going to require a testing process, which will begin in earnest to give everybody a chance to study and, you know, work hard to get that. And there isn't anybody that I wouldn't, couldn't put up for promotion, but it's going to be a difficult choice, but that'll come later on next year. Other than that, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Minardi was sergeant when I first came here, 18 years ago. He's, he's done quite a bit, deputy commander of the SWAT team, semi like SWAT team, which is all of Central Mass, basically 60 communities. He's done an outstanding job. And in the memo that you saw, he was a detective, you know, after being trauma, he went to detective, prosecutor, sergeant, now lieutenant, and a lot of duties he handles that you don't see lieutenants doing. All those radar signs that you see out there, the lieutenant put them up. So he can, he's, he's been cross.
Now you're blamed for that. Now you're tied to that.
Yeah. But, you know, and, you know, I do ask a little more than just the regular patrol work and supervisor work and all that of all the officers, and they pitch in whenever possible. So, and Lieutenant Minardi's never shied away from extra duties in that way. So, very happy to recommend him, and I hope you approve this appointment.
All right, congratulations. Does the board have any questions for Lieutenant Minardi?
Just a comment. I have a, you know, a couple of friends who are in law enforcement and work on various fire departments. And every time I see them, they discuss the issues that they're having with staffing and retention. So it's always great to see, you know, that we're able to staff up both departments and also that we promote from within. You know, I think we have a couple, a couple of special services here in town, and like you said, Chief, people are recognizing that. So, yeah, good on you guys.
Yeah, I fully support everything that you guys have been doing, kind of right sizing the department, creating some opportunities for advancement, you know, a little bit more hierarchy within the department. I think it's exactly what Grafton needs, and I applaud you guys for, you know, undertaking it. Our public safety, you know, posture and picture in Grafton is just, it's leaps and bounds better than it was a few years ago. And it's not disparaging what was going on a few years ago, but, you know, the town's grown a lot. We've had a lot of, a lot of challenges thrown at us, and it's really great to see the town committing to that type of, you know, evolution of our services. So I'm really pleased with everything that's going on, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Full support.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I move that the board vote to affirm, affirm the appointment of Lieutenant Neil Minardi as Deputy Chief of Police of the Grafton Police Department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Up next, we have the Fire Department. We have Chief Matthew here. How are you guys?
Before I start with the promotions, I'd like to recognize Rick Elaine's retirement at the end of this month, after 49 years of service to the Grafton Fire Department. Been a valued member and a big help with the transition over the last few months. To begin, I've promoted Mike Quarter to captain. He's been serving as the interim captain of Station One for the last eight months, and prior to that, he was a lieutenant for 22 years on the Fire Department, and he served 39 years with us. And also has been huge in the transition and has really stepped up as acting captain and proved that he's definitely the man for the job. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And then also, I've promoted Paul Canoya, who we all know, I'd go through his bio, but you guys could probably tell me better than anybody else. We removed one of his hats and put another one on. He obviously served as acting deputy chief, and we saw a good fit with that, and would like to keep that going. And again, he's been an asset to the department going through all the transitions. So it's been excellent to have all of these people working for me and with me.
Awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And does the board have any comments?
Just around Rick?
Yeah.
Because that sort of came and went pretty quick. You know, for me, Rick Elaine's been somebody who, he's not shy to reach out, let's say. But I've always found our conversations really candid, really open, really valuable. And I really do appreciate his willingness to engage with the select board. He's been one of those, for me, one of those key links into the Fire Department in helping me understand how things work and, you know, some of the dynamics that it's difficult to really appreciate when you're outside that chain of command and, and don't deal with the, you know, the day-to-day operations and whatnot. So I just, I have a lot of respect for the guy, and I'm, I'm really thankful that he's been part of the Grafton Fire Department. So I just definitely wanted to say that. Same thing for you guys in terms of just this continued, you know, development of the department, and it's just, it's, it's really great to watch and see you guys so enthusiastic about what you're doing and all the changes that are being made. And I just couldn't be more impressed with what's happening. So thanks for all you guys, and congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, is he retiring at the end of this month or next month?
At the end of this month.
This month, okay.
He is staying on with our recruitment committee, though.
Good.
All right, so I can take a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We have two, to affirm two appointments. One, I move the board vote to affirm the appointment of Paul Canoy as Deputy Fire Chief.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to vote, the board vote to affirm the appointment of Lieutenant Michael Quarter as captain of Station One.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Mike, you got the best job in the department.
Up next is a one-day beer and wine license for J.J.H. Investments, better known as the Grafton Inn. So do we, is Mr. Hunter on at all or?
He is on Zoom. It seems like you have an attendee, so I'll promote him up so he can talk to you.
Great. Hey Jay, can you hear us?
Yep, yep, thank you.
All right, so do you want to just tell us a little bit about the event?
Sure, so it is a charity event for a young woman in Milbury. She has a lot of health issues that came on because she, she had complications from her medication and, and now she needs extended care. So anyway, doing a charity for that. We have about 50 teams doing a cornhole tournament. All the money raised goes directly to the family. We are asking for a one-day beer and wine. There is going to be food sold. I've been in contact with Jim Crosby from Grafton Police. We will have a detail. And also, we will have porta potties by Chase Harris on the Common for that day only. It's noon to four, too, I should say that.
Okay. All right, does the board have any questions?
I hear good things about that event.
Yeah, we've done it before in the past, very successfully. Haven't had any issues.
Love it.
All right. Hearing no questions, I can take a motion.
I move the, the board vote to issue a one-day beer and wine license to J.J.H. Investments LLC for Sunday, October 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Congratulations, and most, a lot of success to your event.
Okay, thank you, Slukboy, appreciate it. Take care.
Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Chair.
Up next is a one-day beer and wine license for Holden Farms. I believe the board was pretty clear last time that we were not going to be entertaining these anymore this year, so I'll pose this to the board. Do you guys want to discuss this tonight?
Well, Madam Chair, I think we, we talked about not entertaining any new dates, but this is kind of a switch of a date, which we told them at the beginning of this whole thing that if it rains, we can change it. So I, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but they're not, they're not new dates. The dates that they have, they just want to switch the days, that's all. I don't know.
So for myself, I'm not looking to be switching dates next year, but since we're not adding additional dates, if we have an agreement that this is the last request, I'm, I'm happy to just move forward, but to let them finish off the season.
I agree, I'm inclined to switch the dates for them.
Okay.
Do we have a policy for something like this, if you're?
We have no written policy about switching of dates.
I just don't, I just don't want to be doing this next year.
I didn't, or like refunds if you, you know, if it was used, you know?
No, I mean, you could do it any, any way that the board wants to. The, the major issue generally is no one's verifying that those days weren't used, which is usually the sticky point with one-day licenses and whether or not you want to allow the switch.
Thank you.
So for me, I believe we covered this last week, where we said we didn't want to be switching dates. And, you know, it was a courtesy when we first started this, when we found out we couldn't issue additional licenses, and we've extended that courtesy a number of times, and then we ultimately issued another license. So for me, I'm not comfortable just continuing switching these, especially when there has been no oversight on these dates.
Based, based off the letter, I, I feel like we at least have to discuss the 24th. As it was mentioned, that that's one of the dates that we issued a permit for, and we gave it Sunday times as opposed to Saturday times. I mean, I haven't, we just got this as we were starting the meeting, so I haven't looked into it any further than that, but, you know, the, the hours change definitely makes a difference for that day.
So, I mean, yeah, we were just handed this note right before the start of the year, so I, I'm unable to verify the accuracy of that claim?
So, is it, we'd have to see, is it, like, if we just had an administrative error where the board voted those dates and we typed it on the license wrong, we can just adjust it to the right dates that the board had approved, the right times that the board had approved?
Okay.
So that's an administrative thing, because I don't recall you changing any times in the meeting.
No, we did not. We've only discussed dates. But when it comes to times as well, when it comes to their entertainment license, I would gently remind them that their music starts at 1:30 on their entertainment for both Saturday and Sunday. So I've been seeing some advertising for other start times on that. But, so whatever, whatever the board would like to do.
We're just, we're changing two days, right? September 11th to the 23rd and Sunday, September 25th to Saturday, October 22nd. Those are the only two days we're changing, correct?
Yeah, according to what we have in front of us. And based on that, I'm going to just go ahead and, I move that the board vote to amend the one-day beer and wine license issued to Holden Farm LLC on August 23rd, 2022, to exclude August 26th and September 11th, and to include September 30th and October 23rd of 2022. So essentially, we're moving the September 11th, August 26th dates to September 23rd and October 23rd, as far as I can see.
And Marie, can I amend that?
Sure.
And that, and that no further dates or times will be changed on this one-day beer and wine license for the rest of 2022.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, I did discussion. Ma'am Marie, is that okay?
If that's what it takes to at least get them these two days?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just want to make sure it's okay, that's all.
I just wanted, according to the letter.
I didn't read this.
Yes, so according, yeah, I know. According to the previous motion, they did want the 23rd, but the updated letter requests Saturday, October 8th instead of the 23rd. If we want to amend the motion to that date instead.
Yeah. So are you offering an amendment, Andy?
Yes.
Okay, so I have an amendment, do I have a second?
So now we're at, to clarify, so we're.
Yep, because we've.
We're excluding August 26th and September 11th. They didn't happen because of rain, so we're going to include September 30th and October 8th, correct?
Correct.
Yep, but then they're also asking to switch the 25th to October 22nd, to go from Sunday to Saturday.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table, and I have one amendment without a second. So should, do you guys want to rescind these motions and start over again, or how do you want to go forward?
Okay, I rescind my motion. I'm going to start over again.
Can you rescind your second?
Yeah.
So sorry, I didn't read this piece of paper in front of me. So I move that the board vote to amend the one-day beer and wine license issued to Holden Farm LLC on August 23rd of 2022 to exclude August 26th and September 11th and September 25th, and to include September 30th, October 8th, and October 22nd.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
I just want to add to the end of that, that no further dates will be changed in fiscal, not fiscal year 22, but in 2022.
Okay, so rain or shine, these are the dates, and that's, and that's that.
All right, is there a second?
Is this, and this license is the second one that has capacity to add these? Okay.
I did want to note also, when going through the materials that were provided, that Ms. Cooper's serving license expires on the 21st of October, which I assume she's going to renew, but, you know, with the additional dates after that, so they're aware.
Good to know.
So we need a copy of that sent, or are these contingent on receiving that?
You can't have an expired one, so I would just.
Okay.
Well, I think Trevor supplied a copy of his as well.
Okay, great.
So that there were, there were two in there, it's just I want to make sure they were aware that one of them, I don't think will be valid for the second date unless it gets renewed. I mean, for the final date. So many dates.
Okay, so is everybody comfortable? All right, motion made and seconded, discussion is all set. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Okay. Up next is the Regional Dispatch, and we have both of our chiefs here if they want to come up and do discuss this.
So can I lead off?
Absolutely.
So thank you for coming, chiefs. When I last presented the Regional Dispatch model and kind of the, gave them the, the update presentation, board members had said that they would like to meet with both of you before they made a choice to continue on the process or not, just to hear any thoughts you have on the matter, concerns, positives, anything that you, you have. So that's, that's why we've asked you back in today. Okay. So go ahead. So, and, and they've, they've, I, I would, I would encourage you, and not that I think you wouldn't be, but to give the board any information you feel, even if it's a negative against it, but I think we need to have an open dialogue about what it does and what it doesn't do. Thank you.
Well, since the dispatch is located in the Police Department, I'll go first, I guess. Now, you know. Yeah, there you go. There you go. No, just, it's, you know, of course, everything has good and, I won't say bad points, but not so good points. You know, there is the fact that anything that has to do with basically free money is nice for the town and the taxpayers and whatnot, and that, along with that, the equipment that we'd be looking at to upgrade our communications infrastructure would, it's, be phenomenal, both for the police and fire and highway and EMS, there's no doubt about that. You know, it is, you know, trying to, especially in this day and age, hiring dispatchers is not the easiest. Any chief will tell you that now. You know, there are chiefs that are much worse, worse off than we are. We're good, we have a steady crew. As a matter of fact, we're sending one, a new dispatcher to school as we speak this week, and he's going to start training in dispatch, and he's a, he seems to be doing great, and I think he's going to learn quick, and we'll be changing our schedule for dispatchers in the, in the short term, as we've been wanting to do that for a while. But like I said, the, you know, free money's nice. There are drawbacks to the, to the plan, talk with chiefs. We had a meeting last week with the entire department, not just with the dispatchers, but the entire department, and nobody really said anything. I haven't gotten too much, and Evan commented how they were somewhat hard to read, right?
Yeah, surprisingly, in a room full of police officers.
Yeah, we, we taught them well, this way here, poker faces. But, no, and, and, you know, I did speak with one dispatcher who was displaced, you know, about a year, two years ago. He was at another town close by, and they went regional, and his, his fear was, you know, he had two lines, basically, here we go again, you know? They said, we'll take along. They said it would take a long time, eighteen months later, I was out of a job. So his, I, I think the issue there was, uh, traveling, because he did live quite, quite distant. He's since moved to Grafton. So wherever we go with, uh, you know, we did have a, uh, quite a large number of uh, towns that we were looking at getting with and a few have since withdrawn their interest. Uh, and we might have other towns that might be interested. I've spoken with some chiefs in Blackstone Valley who, uh, displayed some interest. We'll have to see what happens with that, uh, as this moves along. Um, you know, I can't stress enough, the equipment's a great thing, because it would be quite a bit of money to, uh, to outfit our infrastructure, the radios, the consoles, the radios out on the street, portables, the car radios, the antennas, repeaters, um, and it's something we have to do, whether we like it or not, it's gonna be done. So whether it's done, you know, through a bond, through, uh, appropriation, whatever, or through an RECC, uh, we have to look at that. I mean, our, our system alone is sixteen years old. It was changed when we moved into the new station, not so new, two thousand and six. And it's running good well beyond, uh, its useful life, so we have to consider that. Um, the big thing, one of the drawbacks, and I know Evan brought that up, about a dock station, police station would be certain hours would be, I won't say empty, but, you know, for lack of a better term, it would be empty because officers don't hang around in the station, they will be on the street. Uh, we'd have to make arrangements and I mentioned, at least I have somebody in the dispatch area, at least twelve to sixteen hours, uh, for, for walk-ins, you know, uh, to, uh, you know, speak with people. Otherwise, if you're familiar, and I know Evan once again brought that up, you have a, basically a computer screen. People can buzz themselves, you know, request to come into the station lobby, pick up whatever paperwork that's not available online, speak with somebody and that somebody, uh, dispatcher at a remote, at another location would call for an officer to respond to the station. Problem is there. Um, you know, s- something going on, we have had incidents where people have come in having a heart attack or with a medical emergency, you know? Not too long ago, we had somebody that pulled up in a car and the person was ODing in the backseat. And, uh, you know, when they're, when people are nervous like that, they, they don't know about pressing buzzers. They want to open a door, yell and scream and, and come back and get help for their, their family member, their friend, the victim as quickly as possible. So there's the drawback there. Um, you know, I, I've told my staff, dispatchers, that, you know, we'll do everything we can to make sure that they, they have an opportunity to go to reach a dispatch, so that, that's the human factor that we have to worry about. And I do worry about it, is to make sure that these dispatchers who, uh, you know, have trained hard. It's no, it's no easy task being a dispatcher, uh, will get the opportunity to work at whatever, uh, regional, uh, communication center we have, so. Um, I think that's about the biggest thing. It's gonna be a learning curve, especially when the station is closed. You know, everything, monitors will be up, we're putting up new cameras, uh, that we had, so we'll be able to monitor the station. I'm not worried about anybody, you know, uh, intruding in there. But it's, you know, a situation you gotta think of and, of course, when we have prisoners, uh, we'll have to have somebody in the station to watch the prisoners. We are making use now of the, uh, overnight lockup for, from the sheriff, Worcester County sheriffs. But, um, you know, as COVID now is pretty much done, um, you know, we, we were prisoner free for quite some time. Everybody was released on a summons, but we're starting to get more lockups. So, and that's, I mean, we're not, uh, New York City, so you don't have to worry about having somebody there all the time. But, uh, somebody's gonna be called in to guard prisoners when that occurs, so. Um, other than that, it's a, you know, the, the cost benefits analysis, you're gonna have to weigh and it's gonna be on, uh, uh, every, everyone, I guess, to figure that out. But, you know, it works, um, because you hear good and bad from people you talk, uh, talk to, administration, those on the, on the street, uh, and, and once again, Evan covered all that. You know, you, you can't say you will respond to Stow Road by the old or, you know, respond to the Christmas tree farm or whatever, you gotta have exact addresses, uh, sometimes coordinates or whatever from, from these people working, if they're not familiar with the town. You know, so it's, uh, it's gonna be a learning curve like anything else. Uh, it, it's out there, it works, and we just have to figure on the costs and the benefits and that's up to you.
All right. Does the board want to ask any questions before Chief Matthew goes, or do you want to?
I'm gonna wait till both of them.
All right.
Um, from the fire department standpoint, we're a relatively low frequency as far as calls compared to the police department. And that has always in, from a dispatch side, we've always lacked in ability to train and money for training, and I think this would help with that. Also, the, um, like the chief said, the grants and stuff, uh, right now we're in need of a lot of infrastructure. And that would be huge for the fire department. After doing the tour that we did, I think if the, if the dispatch center is built as far as governing and everything properly, I think it can work. Um, there were a few things that, that I would like to see if it's a, if it was more centralized to the Blackstone Valley. Like the chief said, if we can get another couple of towns to come in as opposed to being outside, because of our, our fire districts and stuff just don't line up with the other towns that we're talking with right now, which can be overcome, but the same thing, it's nice to work with the people that you work with all the time and already have relationships with. And my other thing is that I know the dispatch center we, that we did, they, they wouldn't take, um, business calls at night and stuff like that. And that's a huge thing for me, is I think we need to be able to have that phone answered all the time. And we've run into problems just in the last week, people calling in alarms and stuff on the business line and then hanging up and, you know, well, you can tell them to call nine-one-one. We had one, one person that called and gave their information and hung up and never called nine-one-one. So if the, our, um, uh, office manager wasn't there to take the call, it would, it would have been missed. So that's just one of, one of my big things, is to make sure that all those, those boxes are checked. And the human factor and the local factor is tough for me. I'm a, you know, local guy and you want to see people. We, you know, the chief just hired one of the qualified firefighters as, uh, dispatcher. It was good to see that come from within and all that, so I, I would, on the, the darker side of it, I'd rather, I'd rather see the localness stay and from my point of view. But I think the whole idea is everything's going to statewide and it's worked nationally, you know, usually under county government and stuff like that, but here it's just a little slow on the, uh, the uptake, so. That's what I got.
Great, does the board have any questions? Yes.
So, Norm, you're very political. Um, I, both you, both you know that I, um, wasn't in favor of this when this thing first came out. And I, and I wasn't in favor of it because of Westboro, Southborough, Hawkington, areas that we really, we go to Westboro, areas that we really don't do business in. And, and I say, you know, when I mean business, I mean you guys, your departments don't do business with that section or that, that list of towns. I would be totally
I mean, we do Westboro.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I said Westboro, yeah. But, um, I would be totally, have a totally different outlook on this if we were looking at Milbury, Sutton, Northbridge, you know, even, even Uxbridge, you know, but I didn't hear anything from either one of you guys that said yes or no. And what I'm saying, Norm, you, you, I'm chief, I'm sorry, uh, you, you were very political because you, you, you looked at it and you said, eh, 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 you know, you really, eh, but it's up to you. No, see, y- yeah, you're absolutely correct. It is up to us to, to implement this situation. But we need your input. And I would really like to hear yes or no. And I know there's money involved and I know there's money to be saved and I know there's money in grants. But I heard Eric say he doesn't want to lose the local end of things. I heard Norm say there are good, there are bad. I want to hear yes or no, is it gonna be good for the town of Grafton to get into the dispatch system of all of these cities, all these towns that we talked about? Even Marlborough was in there, I think. Was it Marlborough? Marlborough wasn't in there? Marlborough dropped out. You know, i- if, if I can hear yes or no on that, or we can say, hey, maybe we can recruit Milbury, Sutton, Northbridge, Uxbridge, you know, Upton, um, m- more towns that we actually, you know, are contiguous with and that we actually work with on a regular basis, so.
Can I just, before you guys respond real quick?
They're not gonna respond.
This doesn't make those towns mutual aid. Our mutual aid towns remain the same.
No, trust me, I know the mutual aid system. It's not, it's not, that's not the thing. I, I'm, I'm trying to stay local, okay? I'm trying to, as, 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 you know, Chief Matthew said, you lose that local touch to your dispatch. As Norm said, somebody pulls up in front of the police station at eleven o'clock at night and they're having a baby, or God forbid, they're having an overdose, or they're having a heart attack and there's no one there, because you can't pull up to any one of our fire stations and do that at eleven o'clock at night. There's no one there. So I'm, I, I'm still not in favor of this at all.
Okay, let's see. Any other members have any questions or comments?
I mean, I have a couple of questions, assuming that this first came up before I was on the board, right? Or is this more recent?
Yeah, we started talking about this close to a year ago, yeah.
So like, you don't have to give me a whole big, but the Reader's Digest version, like, so how did that first come up?
Me, chief?
Just like cost savings or like?
Uh, no, so we, we got invited to a, uh, meeting with all the local towns to discuss the, the prospect of regionalizing. So the state of Massachusetts nine-one-one department has been tasked with regionalizing as much of the state as possible. And that's because primarily economy of scale and monies and, and dollars, that's really what it comes down to. Um, and so they've really been incentivizing these, these moves. So right now we have, state of Massachusetts has now created twenty-six, I believe is the number, of regional dispatches throughout the state. Um, some are contiguous, some are not. Uh, one of them is like the entirety of Berkshire County excluding Pittsfield and Greenfield. Um, so that was really our first foray into it. We met with other, um, other towns and we had said, yeah, we want to be part of this study that looks at the dollars and cents and also looks at the feasibility and looks at the infrastructure that you have in place and what it would take to upgrade it. Um, and that's prior to Chief Matthew becoming Chief Matthew.
Okay, thanks. So other towns around us that are currently doing this, anyone? Not yet.
Upton and Hopedale have one, I think.
I'm sorry?
I think Upton and Hopedale have one.
Well, yeah, what happened there is, I'm not speaking for other towns, but I mean, it's public record. They, um, Mendon had a, uh, uh, basically, uh, gone in with Millville and, uh, Hopedale at one time. Hopedale, uh, got out of it for whatever reason and they went with Upton because once you lose your PSAP, you can't get it back, period. So they went in with Upton and, um, they got themselves a secondary PSAP, which is very limited in what they can do. Uh, so, and Upton does well because they, they call themselves regional now. But, uh, Mendon went to the Metacomit, uh, and actually Mendon and Millville went to the Metacomit Communication Center in Franklin. So, um, you know, the thing is with this, we had an opportunity years back with Worcester. I got an invitation, I wasn't interested and I didn't, I pushed that, I wasn't. So it's not something that, well, the first one that comes along, wanna grab it. I didn't want to go to Worcester, because we'd have, we'd have been swallowed up, you know? And it's no fault of anybody, it's just that they're so big, they're so busy that, you know, they're, uh, telecommunications would have been inundated. And if something happened in Grafton, I think they would, it would have been hard for them to focus certain communications, uh, you know, with Grafton. You know, because if a hurricane or some, uh, you know, catastrophe, catastrophic event that affects the whole area, what do you think they're gonna be focusing their efforts on? And that was my thought, so I didn't even entertain the idea. And, um, you know, how was it be at that time, agreed? So this time here, it's, you know, what they offer is, is, um, it's intriguing. Uh, it works in other places, like I said, that hometown feel that you're gonna have in Grafton or whatever, but we're expanding that you're gonna lose, there's no two ways about it. My biggest concern, uh, it, all else, all else being equal, I would say yes. Uh, my concern is I want to see the dispatchers that are working, my full-time dispatchers. We can't guarantee anything, but I want to guarantee them to make sure that they have a job when this moves. Um, and, um, as I said, the infrastructure, it's gotta be done one way or another. This is the easiest way to do it, uh, you know, we're talking, uh, fiber, we're talking microwave, which is, you know, the, the price, the, the cost is gonna be, uh, very high for that type of technology. But it's, it's, it's here, it's coming and whether we do it on our own or whether we do it with a, uh, a regional facility, that's, once again, that's, you know, I'm just telling you the concerns there. One thing nice, if and when the, uh, all our dispatchers, uh, do go to a regional dispatch, they're gonna be making a lot more money, that's for sure. As the regional dispatchers, uh, uh, they, they do pay very well, you know? So it's good for them, for that, um, so.
Can I ask you a question about the dispatcher that you currently have now that was displaced when his previous or their previous, um, employer went regional? Were they given an opportunity to apply for that regional? Because, because my understanding is with this one, they'll have the opportunity to apply and, and give preference that way first.
As I stated, yeah, they, he was, but it was a travel time, it was like twice the distance for him to travel.
Okay.
Uh, and that's not the situation now, he lives in Grafton now, so that's good. So I, you know, I'm assuming, because there was nothing, he was, he's a great dispatcher.
Right.
And, uh, you know, he came with us, he loves it here and, uh, so I'm sure, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing to keep any of our dispatches from, you know, uh, going to another regional. But then again, you're also gonna have the dispatches from Southborough, from, uh, you know, from Westborough, from whatever, vying for the jobs and you're not gonna have, I don't think, if they'll have enough jobs to fill every position. Uh, you know, I mean, we only have three dispatches, most places have two per shift, you know? So, uh, but we only have three full-time dispatches, we'll have a fourth shortly. But, um, you know, it's, and, and that way it's a crapshoot to guarantee that they're gonna have, uh, positions. But we're gonna fight like heck to do that. That's my biggest concern.
I have another question. Of the seven, you just mentioned earlier, seven new officers, how many of them grew up in Grafton and understand the local feel and know where that Christmas tree shop was? Or is that kind of getting phased out too, because we're hiring people from out of town already and they need more of a professional? You guys, of course are, but.
But, you know, the, and we do it with our dispatches too. The, the officers, when, that's why they do field training, because they go out and they learn all these places. You know, they're, they go on the road and we do that with our dispatches. We take them out and, you know, they don't do as much, uh, I mean, field training is twelve weeks. So they get to know the hotspots, they just get, they just get called to these hotspots all the time. Then they learn, uh, you know, the conservation area, the Christmas, you know, tree farm, this, that, uh, and all. But they're out there for twelve weeks with an officer, sitting in the car with him, pointing out, this is that, this is that. And of course GPS does help, but, you know, the old names and all that, uh, they learn it. But the dispatchers who are getting the calls, because they're getting the calls that say, somebody will call, especially the elderly will call up, oh, you know, uh, and trying to explain it. And a person in a regional dispatch, if it's not one of the dispatches from Grafton, will, will not know, period. You know, uh, using landmarks or whatever, that's, and that's, that's the thing, so.
And that happens enough that it's a?
It happens from time to time.
Okay.
But, so, chief, my only question is, when they call and say, buy such and such, but they're, the number they're calling from shows up as a dot on the screen?
Nine-one-one, if they call a nine-one-one.
So that's, some of that's mitigated with, with that?
Yeah, I guess that you got GPS and, you know, nine-one-one, but not, they don't all come in, you know, as the chief said, uh, you get some calls on the fire line, those are mostly alarm calls, but some people do call, uh, for, for service uh, on the fire line or the business line, because they feel that, oh, nine-one-one's not, you know, not for that, but it is, but, so.
So just for clarification, Evan, if we vote in favor of this tonight, all we're voting in favor of this is to, to stay in the conversation. It does not guarantee that we're going to do this, it just continues us in the conversation. So would you guys be in support of us continuing the conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Ray?
Yes, Ray. It doesn't
I got one yes. I got one yes.
So we're voting on this tonight?
I'm, I'm in favor of regional dispatch, I'm not necessarily in favor of the original setup and that kind of thing. I think if it, if it's built correctly I think if it, if it's built correctly, it's the way to go and it's the way that eventually we'll probably have to go.
Now, one thing I explained, I had a talk with my, my dispatcher that had this concern. And, um, and it's, it was important to talk to him, of course. And, uh, you know, I mentioned to him, when you did this, you had a short time. They already had the place open. It was just a matter of your department going to that regional center.
Right.
This one here is so far off, I think. They don't even have a site yet. There were some, there were some sites that were, uh, that were chosen that, and basically nine-one-one said, no, you know.
That was one of my questions, is how do they determine where the center will be? Obviously you have to figure out which communities you're teaming up with first. But then, is it a new building that's built, created?
It depends. So, that's all, you know, you have to, you have to form the district first under the law. So it's basically like forming its own municipality. You gotta set up the governance model. And then you can start working out all those little details. Um, some regionals have set up, um, the one I'm most familiar with set up in an interim position first. And then bought a building that is now being renovated to house them. Um, other ones have done ground-up builds and some of them are in, like the one we went to in Foxborough is an old telecommunications building from the Cold War period. Um, which you won't see.
Yeah.
Um, it's a cool place to go and visit, but I also, I tried to temper people that like this is Dr. Evil's lair and it's really cool. But this is not likely what the one we built is gonna look like, because you're not gonna find another spot like that.
If I may, it might be a good idea to check out the Metacomit.
Yep.
Closest, and, uh, I, from what I understand, it's, it's your typical.
Yep.
Um, you know, RECC, like Foxborough was just, you know. It's definitely not a, your typical one. You won't see one of those being built again.
Yeah. Then where's the Metacomit one?
In Franklin.
Okay, oh, that's where Hopedale, one of those places went, okay.
So if we vote yes, what, what's the next move?
I didn't realize we were, I thought we discussed at the last meeting that we were having you guys come in to give us more information, that we could then continue to get more information. I didn't realize we were voting tonight.
When, when I had done the presentation to the board, I had.
Was that last week?
No, it was a, a few weeks back, I think. Um, we were asked by our, our surrounding communities that are part of this conversation to give them an affirmation that we were gonna stay in the process by October first.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to do, is just let them know that yes, Grafton's in and interested in moving forward. Um, and then, you know, we're not signing a contract, we're not doing any of that stuff yet. There's, there's a lot of different steps on the road and we'll deal with those as they come. Um, we're not.
And the vote in the affirmative does not commit us.
Yeah, not, not now. You'll, you will have a vote where you've, the state's gonna say, you gotta, you gotta lock in at this point because we're gonna throw money at this. Real money.
That's not yet.
But it's not yet. And, and you, you've did that already to be part of the Collins Center, I believe. The original study.
And I, if I may?
Oh, absolutely.
I think we can do like Marlboro or, you know, even if we're saying, yeah, let's go forward. Because at any time, they could come up with something and say, oh, by the way, you're gonna, you're gonna have to pay this much or whatever.
Or they're, they're gonna pick a govern, governance model that we don't like and then we're gonna, we would bounce.
Or location, that's to, that's totally, you know. Or they, or they could say your infrastructure, you're gonna have to put in for this, put in for that, which it's self-defeating, it, you know. Um, so.
So they just pulled out Marlboro? Yeah, okay.
Yep, and that's not uncommon. The one that I stood up, we had two towns that were constantly in and out, in and out, in and out. Which worked out for my town because we kept, just kept moving up the list of towns that got stuff beforehand. So, um, you know, it was like City of Chicopee got their stuff and then Little Town of Munson got all this, you know, money infused into it. Um, and so it really, you know, it, it depends. You're gonna get people that vacillate because it's, well, quite frankly, it's political. Because we're asking the politicians to make a policy decision and that goes back and forth and changes and vacillates. And it's gonna do that in every single town the whole time while you try to wrestle it into its own municipality and stand up what governance model you want. And the only one that I think Grafton's really interested in is governance board that has one town, one vote. So it doesn't matter your population, doesn't matter your size, doesn't matter your geography. One town, one vote as far as governance goes. And then an ops board that represents both police and fire equally, that has input into all of the operational decision-making. Um, because what we found when we went to Foxborough, they set it up differently. That's why they don't take business calls. That's why they don't do, you know, X, Y, and Z is because they stood that up as their own municipality and said, we want you to just do dispatch. And, and those towns were good with that. That's not what Grafton is looking for as far as a deliverable. We want to constantly have a say in what's happening. Uh, and we wanna be able to have the conversations about, you know, after four-thirty PM or whatever, your department is fairly unmanned. Those business calls roll over to, you know, your, your regional, which is, which is pretty typical. So, um, when we were doing that, we had, you know, like the town of Long Meadow has, well, we have somebody from eight to four. So from eight to four, it rings in the station. If there's so, a, a number of rings happen and nobody picks it up, it rolls over to regional. They take that business call and then call the on-duty whoever they're supposed to call. You set up all those things. I mean, there are, there are pros and cons. There's workarounds to, I, a lot of the cons, there's still always going to be, you know, it's, it's, it's a different, it's a whole different model. So you need to be realistic about what it does and does not do.
Okay.
All right, does the board have any other questions or comments, or do you guys feel comfortable, um, making a motion?
Madam Chair, just so you know, you do have one hand on Zoom.
Oh, yeah, okay. Hi, Brian, can you hear us? Brian?
It's like you're on mute.
Brian walked away from his computer. Okay, Brian, we tried. Um, I think we might be moving forward now. Okay, Brian, sorry. All right, um, is there any other questions or comments? Is there any other hands up?
Nope.
Okay, um. So I, I, I feel comfortable moving forward in the conversation. I'm excited to see what other things can transpire. And I, and I like the fact that if it turns in a direction that we're not a fan of, that we can pull out, so, um, that's my two cents.
Yeah, to me, the devil's in the details. So the governance model's really important. The towns that end up, you know, being in the district, that's really important. Um, for me, it's, it's, it's kind of a matter of timing. So clearly we need some upgrades. Um, so we need to make a decision. Does the town take that on by itself? And, you know, do a bond or, or whatever, or do we look to join a district and have the state pay for, you know, some or all of that? Um, but it does seem like the direction to travel for all the towns in Massachusetts is some level of regionalization. So it's, it's, do we do it now or do we do it later? And I, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, but I think, for me at least, I'm definitely interested in continuing that conversation. You know, seeing if we can pull in, um, some other towns, um, that, you know, are maybe a little bit better aligned with the, the fire district you mentioned. Um, that makes a lot of sense to me, so. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of continuing the conversation at least and, and seeing where we go. And then as those details play out, we, you know, we'll make future decisions based on those, that information.
One more question, sorry. So when you said, um, somebody said twenty-six in the state, was it twenty-six dispatch centers? And then how many towns does that encompass, do you know?
I don't know. Top of mind, Will had a map up. It's, it's a good, you can share it again. It's a, it's a pretty good portion of the state. I don't know. I'm, I'm sure that that data is available, because that's where we got this map. I just don't know it.
Yep, okay.
Uh, top of mind, but, you know, you can see. You can see where it is, um.
Halfish.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, if, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
Some call themselves, well, I guess appropriately so, regional dispatch centers, but sometimes a lot of them just have two. Webster has, has themselves, I believe, Dudley.
Hmm.
And they're considered a regional dispatch. I, and we call Upton and, uh, and Hopedale, you know, regional, and they get the money for it. You know, uh, is it a true regional? That's what nine-one-one calls it, so I guess it must be. But, you know, it's not like what we're doing with five or six. And as I mentioned before, I have spoken with, uh, some chiefs in the Blackstone Valley. There's probably two that are definitely interested. Um, I haven't heard back from them. I'll be following up with them. And then, you know, there's some that, I don't think, uh, they understand everything. I sent them a copy of the work in progress from the, uh, uh, from the study committee. Uh, and, uh, we talked to them again. So we might get some from the Blackstone Valley. And, uh, they did indicate, uh, the Collins, right, Collins Center?
Yes, that's right.
Did indicate that, uh, some, in, in these cases, you, they'll have other people that will sign on.
Later.
And, uh, and this, if there's a line, then there's a, there is a waiting period. So we've, we pulled out and then decided, okay, we want in again. You know, if we're first in queue, then we'd get in. If not, we'd have to wait our turn if somebody else came in. So it's not like we could never get back in.
Right.
If, you know.
Yeah, and I think something, Amory, we were talking about, um, you know, different PSAPs in the state. One of the interesting things that you're starting to see now as these regionals are forming is that the people that were maybe on the fence and didn't get in it in the beginning, they're now shopping around for either the best deal or their best fit for their community. So if you look at, Will, can you move in on the teal? In the middle, the teal. I know you disagree with me. It looks teal on there, but on yours, it's green.
Oh, green?
On yours, but look at that, that's teal. No, 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 no.
Other teal.
The other teal.
The Barry.
Barry Hubbard.
I thought that was Shaw Truce, Rutland. I don't know what it is.
Seafoam green.
If I say the wrong color, he literally Googles it and shows me the right color.
I wanna let everybody know on my screen that it's not teal at all.
But it's the teal there, right?
So in other words, Shirley and Air are part of that?
No, so if you look at Hubbardston, Barry, Oakham, Rutland, and now Warren picked up with them.
Right, okay.
Because if you look down at the blue down there, the Chicopee, Munson, Long Meadow, East Long Meadow.
Mm-hmm.
Warren was originally in that conversation and decided to go with, with those other communities. And then Wilbraham and Hamden didn't wanna come and play in the sandbox. And I can tell you all about that. I'm still mad about that. But they regionalized, but now you see where is actually in the queue and is being dispatched by the dark blue. There, that's Westcom. Um, so you're starting to see, you know, they're, they're picking up, um, other communities around them. And then the, the idea is some of these are actually in transition, so you might see as they get into a bigger space, more communities sign on. Um, o- overtime. And you can see that, like with Peter Sam Hardwick, New Braintree, that's all state police, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, but they won't, they won't dispatch you if you're over a certain population number. I think they're at capacity for New Braintree right now.
That's why I was just gonna ask, so at some point, you know, let's say over West Hampton, et cetera, Chesterfield, I know they're all smaller towns, but when, is there a point where we can't accept anymore? Like, or how are they building these facilities?
So it's, it's, uh, and, and I've said this to the state nine-one-one people, it's totally ridiculous how this has happened. Never should have gone like this. It's, it's, the, the state has a very, Massachusetts has that kinda puritanical, uh, we're, we do it ourselves, uh, mentality. And so they don't wanna tell the local governments what they have to do. But if they had just gone and said, every single one of these is gonna be done by county, you'd have an actual map that made sense.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna have that now. It, the, the toothpaste is out of the tube and we've got things happening all, all over the place. So it's really, it's, it comes down, in my experience personally, it's, it's ninety percent politics of getting it through the political bodies with towns that are palatable. Um, like when, when I was doing Westcom, we got along great with Chicopee, Long Meadow, East Long Meadow. The TAs and, and mayor's office that I worked with, we all got along really great. It was super easy. And I think that's probably what happens in some of these other towns is that, you know, you, you get those, those relationships and, and you go from there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So why can't we talk to Milbury Sutton, Northbridge, Auburn, Oxford?
It sounds like the chief is talking to some folks.
I didn't go out to Auburn. Well, I just, I just threw that out there because I saw it.
A study was done in these original towns and that's what started that conversation. I don't think anything prevents that from happening in.
No.
It's on, yeah.
No, I, what?
Didn't express the interest, right?
Right.
In this model.
In this particular one that we're doing. So I think that the other thing that can happen, even if they don't get in on the ground floor, if we're standing up a regional that can host eight communities, they can, they can still come on or they can get in. You know, I'm sure that if one of them sends a letter of interest, we would pull them into the conversation. Um, it's just getting to that point. But these are the people that were at the meeting that said, yeah, we're interested. Why don't you put us into that study and let's see what shakes out?
I feel like we're in that feeling it out phase, where everybody's gonna be feeling everybody out, seeing how firm these commitments are and whatnot. And somebody needs to be the one to really take that first step.
We went to a, uh, meeting in Southborough and that was really like the, the final shakedown that we came up with this October one. And, and you saw the towns that were on the, on the edge or, or, and I don't mean this disparagingly, but they had some, some nugget that was the deal breaker for them. So if they couldn't host it and get their building remodeled, then, then they didn't wanna play in that particular sandbox. And I think we saw that play out and we went down to the four we have, which is good because if we do move forward, those are the towns that have said, yeah, we're, we're seriously gonna be part of this process and not teetering on that edge.
Okay. We've covered this pretty in-depth for tonight. Um, I can take a motion if the board is ready.
Um, I move the board vote to affirm its commitment to the current regional dispatch plan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. So I seconded to that. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I opposed.
I.
Amory, I couldn't tell where you were. You were.
S and I.
Okay, so it's three to one to declare the motion carried. All right, thanks for sticking around tonight. I'm sure we'll be picking your brain again as this process goes forward. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
And equally, like if something immediately becomes a red flag for one of you guys, please don't hesitate to reach out and discuss that with us.
Okay, absolutely. Good night.
All right, thank, thank you, guys.
Up next, we have a town meeting warrant article, ninety-five North Street presentation. We have Jen Anderson. And I believe Ray on, uh, Zoom is here as well for that. How are you?
Hello. Um, hi. Uh, so yeah, Jen Anderson, Recreation Director, um, and Leah Cameron, Conservation Agent. And I've been working on developing a passive recreation park at ninety-five North. Um, so I'm here tonight with, um, a few members of the Recreation Commission. Kayla is here. I think Michael Bruni, there might be some attendees in there on Zoom. Um, Leah is in Conservation Meeting right now. I'm gonna try to pop in when she can. Uh, and Ray, uh, Donnance here is our landscape architect for the project. Um, so I'm just here tonight to present it to you and, uh, so I just have a, um, summary of it. Uh, so CPC has approved the funding for the construction of the park. And an article will be presented at town meeting this fall for residents to hopefully vote on moving forward with the project. Um, if you recall, this land was donated by the Engwell family with the intent for public access for passive recreation with multi-use trails, habitat preservation and other like. The town voted to accept the land and then approve CPA funding for the design of the park. Thank you, William. Uh, so two community meetings and an online survey were conducted to seek input. We also conducted with town departments, including police, fire and parks and commissions such as recreation, conservation and accessibility advisory. This project accomplishes numerous goals of the CPC and open space, space and recreation plan, including protecting Grafton's unique character and quality of life, preserving open space, natural resources, water resources, wildlife habitat, protecting and conserving land resources and enhancing, expanding and connecting recreation and conservation resources to serve the residents of Grafton of all ages and abilities. We also have support from multiple commissions, including recreation, conservation, um, accessibility advisory and historical. Um, and those letters, um, should have been sent your way. So you have those to view as well. Um, so the next slide shows the design of the park. Um, hope you guys were able to take a, a look at some of that that got sent to you. Um, and so those, because of the hard to read, I, on the next slide, also have, um, a list of some of the stuff I drew as well. Um, so this park is gonna offer on, a place unlike anything in town. Um, the amenities include a dedicated parking area with accessible spaces, the town's first ADA multi-use, um, loop, shaded picnic area, hiking and snowshoeing trails, pollinator-mowed meadows, informal nature play and interpretive signage. The area will serve the entire population of Grafton and encourage youth group gatherings and other educational and programming opportunities. The total CPA request for this project is six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. This includes site prep, site amenities, construction and soft costs, and is reflective of over two hundred thousand dollars in con work and contributing funds which account for almost twenty-three percent of the total cost. This project is eligible for a number This project is eligible for a number of matching grants, which in full range from up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and up to fifty percent of the project. There's an opportunity to um for return of CPA funds. This project uh will have a need for ongoing maintenance to include the parking lot in Mode Meadow. And this will be absorbed into the current recreation, conservation, DBW, and parks maintenance budgets. Uh, so we're seeking your support for this project, and we're thank you for the opportunity to um here tonight. We also have a community meeting on October sixth. Um, where we'll go more in depth of the project one more time with the public prior to town meeting. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions at this point right now.
Alright, thank you for the presentation, yes.
Uh, Jen, can you just explain the in-kind donations, in-kind work from the town?
Yes, so that's mainly, it's it's all DBW. Um, and so that is a lot of the parking lot work. Uh, let's see, for clearing, grading, surfacing, the pulvert work. And then mainly clearing and mowing, mowing and pruning, um some some stone wall removal, um in the woodland trail work.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
What's the total without the, sorry, so six eighty-five is a CPA request than the total?
Um, is it eight eighty?
And so that, so the eight eighty with that potential, this LWCF would be up potentially up to fifty percent of that number?
No, fifty percent of our.
CPA request, okay, thanks.
So we have to fund it in fully. These are reimbursement grants, so we have to fund it in fully, um and then seek that. So. Um, those are the actual cost numbers. So the whole project is eight eighty-something. Our ask, um because we've reduced it with contributing funds um for recreation and conservation, um as well as the in-kind work. Um, gets the. CPAs, that's it's six eighty-five.
Is this what you plan to present at town meeting as well, this what this presentation?
Yes. I mean, we'll add one more too about the, you know, the history to an extent. Um, I gave you guys, you know, the full narrative report that we posted on the project website as well, which is tinyurl.com slash ninety-five north. Um, which goes into more detail if people really wanna get into all that. Um, but a little bit like we've done before, um, you know, um, I think acknowledging. What the online responses, you know, look like and, um, you know, that were in line with. Um, the family's wishes and 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 confirming that with the surveys and the feedback and such. Um, and how we get to this design point um between the two concepts and and other like. Um, but um that this was what we were able to um get down to and to 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 meet that and. Uh, accomplish uh the goals and um the goal, the the property, um, you know, we we accepted. Uh, this property with the intent that this would happen. Um, and so we were able to get the funds to design it with CPA uh a year ago. And so now we're here with an actual design and hoping to be able to move forward.
May not be able to answer this, but like what are the chances of those grants? You know, any history in terms of, and and doesn't have to be the fifty percent, but like a percentage. What are our cha- shots of getting a little bit of that back, I guess?
Yeah, I I was more familiar with uh the chances for the park grant. And that's pretty high, but that's more um solely active recreation versus a passive recreation. Um, which is what the land and water um grant is. And so, um. I'm not sure on that. That number, but it it also depends, um, really think on what their concentration is. In their in their grant year. So like right now, it's um climate resiliency. And so um there's things that they point out for that, that that you would really wanna highlight more to give you more points. So. It's all it's all listed as points and all of the items that, you know, you need to rank higher. Um, and we have um a lot, we can check off a lot of those boxes between our community compact cabinet agreements and our municipal. Um, Volerinoli program or whatever it's called. There's all those sorts of parts of it too. You know, it aligns with our open space plan. It aligns with the state open space plan, the sport plan. Um, so those are all really good things. Um, same with Mass Office of Disability, you know, it. Come on, tends on their focus, so I think that we look at what those grant year rounds look like, right? And if it's it's the right fit. Um, I like to think that we will be able to get, you know, nice little chunk back.
Can I jump in? So we don't have any actual track record with either of these grants in Grafton. Nor do I. So I think it's, just wanna make sure we're tempering the conversation with, they're both competitive grants. So none of that money is guaranteed.
Sure.
Um, I think that that what Jen is doing and and Leah and the Rec Commission. They're lining us up to score as well as we possibly can. Um, but it's uh like with the parks, I feel more confident because I've done more of that and I know how that rolls out. I think, um, you know, like we do with everything, we we work really hard to try to pull these grants back in and use less. Less local dollars, um, but they are competitive. So I think we just need to. Be honest about, you know, the fact that not, I I don't mean to say honestly, you weren't being honest, I just mean.
No, 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 like I know with the park grants, we're in a small town category, right? And so there's less projects that are applied for that, and so they have a higher fund rating. Um, you know, these are, the land and water is is um federal, so that state approves it first, you know, and so. Um, they support their their percent, right? Um, Mass Office of Disability, I think we've done some smaller things. And again, I it's um kinda really what their focus is. So I think. When that comes out, then we know what it is and if if it's the right fit. You know, this the with the CPA funds, um, those are gonna be used. That's all cash, you know, um on hand. Um, and they're still gonna be in a great position with a few hundred thousand dollars left over. If anything comes, you know, in line before before May, so. Um, um, I I think the funding, you know, works that way. Um, and we have obviously their support for numerous reasons because of that. And so I think we're in, you know, a good. Good point in time to be able to move forward with it.
And just, sorry, Amory. Sorry, last thing. So on those grants, not to perseverate on that, but um I think, you know, assuming at town meeting. The notion of trying to recoup a little bit would be a favorable notion, right? So we approve this potentially at town meeting, and that's when you're able to apply for those or so before any? So pretty much straight away.
Yeah, so the next article or two articles later, the town needs to approve that we go and seek this funding. So that's one of the next articles, so that you approve us to be able to go do that. Um, because they need to have that municipal vote.
Yeah.
That to be able to do it.
And then straight away at that point, once it's been approved, you're able to go.
You know, there's, yeah, when their rounds are. So like, uh, land and water, uh, I think just closed, right? Um, and we'll open back up next August or October or something. I have the in front of me. Um, and there's just certain things you have to have in place before you apply. So that's what we could work on all winter to get our things lined up. And then be able to get it out the door, so.
So it might have been on a a different slide, but on this slide, um, to Amory's point, it's not super clear the total cost of the project. And um is 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 that on a different slide, just to?
Uh, I don't I don't have it on a slide here. Um, I'm going to pull it up.
I mean, I know it's places to find, but just I'm just thinking for town meeting, just to have it as clear as possible for, you know, people seeing it for the first time. I know you've presented this several times to CPC at this point, so.
Yes, yes, his historical, we've been to, um, yeah, access accessibility advisory, um CPC. Now I don't know why I can't put. So I added some work that we've already done to it.
So between.
But it's it's eight eighty-something, I just gotta.
So between the the CPA request and the in-kind donations, the project is covered fully that way though, right? You don't need any additional funding from another source.
Correct.
Do you have any idea on that Mass Office of Disability when that? Um, cycle is?
You were just looking at that one, right? I can pull it up.
Yeah, I can.
August to October, I wanna say.
Similar to the other one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then awards go out late November, early December.
Yep, I think you're right.
So similar to that LWCF?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if it's approved at at town meeting in October, it's still possible to apply?
No, it'll be for next year.
Yeah, we'd be back.
October one, it's close.
And it's still, it's still reimbursement. So we would have to be be able to submit invoices before we even, you know. So like that whole timing alone is, right?
And and the MOD grant rounds actually March, it opens up.
I was gonna say, I thought that.
Um, and then gets awarded. Looks like July, if I'm not reading this incorrectly.
I know, I I wrote it all up in an email for myself.
And they're all reimbursement grant, which is what we're. What we're going for.
Okay. Um, I think another uh good point to hit on for town meeting that I saw you mention at CPC was that you have like a built-in buffer. I think you mentioned it a little bit ago, but that, you know, for the the rising costs of everything that this is, you know, could potentially.
Yeah, it's ten ten percent um. For for, yeah, most of it.
Yep.
Alright, does the board have any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
I gotta amend it. There's there's two different things on the website. So it's actually August first is when it opens, and it closes September thirtieth.
Okay.
It's not April, that was a different, right? On the same heading. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Alright, um, up next is the town meeting warrant article bylaw change. Uh, Evan's gonna run through that with us real quick.
Yep, so uh Chris McGoldrick was going to present this originally. Uh, but he is not available this evening, so you're stuck with me again. Um, so I'm gonna go through Articles five, six, and seven. Yeah, that would be good, Will, thank you. Um, and we will talk about uh what these changes are. And I have uh Dave Robbins with me as well. Uh, to correct any mistakes that I make along the way. Um, okay, so Article five is pretty straightforward. Article five looks at our off-street zoning uh regu- schedule, uh off-street parking schedule. And what it does is um exempts existing structures uh and new uses within the Grafton Common Historic District. But it's it does not exempt uh new structures within the Grafton Common Historic District. So what this essentially is to break it down is. You you move into a historic building on the common, you are gonna have a restaurant. There's no possibility that you can create parking. You don't own any of that. It's all public, the area. So this, rather than going through this whole big process, this exempts you from having to try to shoe, try to come up with some way to. Show that you can accommodate parking. It's just not gonna happen. Now, if there was a vacant spot, which there really isn't. Uh, and you were gonna build a new building, then you'd have to comply with what our parking uh tells you to do. So it's really just to try to streamline that Grafton uh Common Historic District. Parking process. Alright, any questions on that? Okay, yeah, that one's pretty straightforward. We'll move on to um medical marijuana and marijuana establishments. So a lot of this is us simply bringing our bylaw in line with. Uh, what the CCC has now updated their regulations to be. So our regulation numbers, um, and and some of what we call. Um, some of what we call things locally uh is different than what the state now calls them. Um, I do wanna call your attention to Section uh five in this um article, which is uh five point ten point two. Um, and we're adding definitions. One is marijuana courier and one is marijuana delivery operator. And so this is something that was requested by the uh local. Companies, they are retailers in Grafton. That's when we really started having this conversation. Um, so it it appears to me that after uh Grafton did its first pass at its marijuana bylaws. Uh, then the state opened up the ability to do delivery. And so we don't have that option in here. So other towns around us have that. Option, Worcester has that option, Grafton does not. Um, and so this allows for uh that here in Grafton. So. That is the general gist, I think, of kind of the high level of what you need to know in that section. Any questions on that, or do you want me to go into more detail on that one?
No, I assumed that the whole thing was just aligning with the state, so it is, with the exception of those two things, a delivery and a courier.
Right, right, exactly. We're we're adding those two uses to the to the section. Those are kind of the the high level.
And that was an ask by the local?
Yeah, we started having, Chris and I had met a couple of times with people. Um, that were looking to do delivery in the town of Grafton. Um, but we had no provision to allow that to to occur. Um, so this just does that, plus it, this is on all be used from the CCC. What I screw up, Dave?
Yeah, just to, as a point of clarification.
And he just sat up right up in there.
I said something and I heard the cheer creek and I was like, oh, that wasn't right.
Just just to clarify, the the marijuana courier and marijuana delivery are also there to align with the current regulations.
Yes, okay.
So I mean, really, really, the this whole thing was, uh, me, the 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 delivery operations were sort of one of the points.
Okay.
That kind of prompted us to, uh, you know, to to address this, to to look at this.
But would we be in alignment if we didn't have those two sections, we still would be okay with the state?
Yeah.
You have to have these changes.
Without addressing those two types of operations explicitly, there would end up being some ambiguity in. In how someone would go about com- complying with the with the bylaw if they were to incorporate delivery. There is an aspect of delivery that was effectively already included in the bylaw. That is if a marijuana retailer, a marijuana retailer can add delivery to their business. That was already accommodated by the law, but it was these two new, two new types of operations. That without an explicit representation in the zoning bylaw. Would, there would be some difficulty in figuring out how to fit them into zoning.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I will say you answered it, though.
Yeah, I'm pretty close, right?
Yeah, Evan wasn't wrong, it was just, I mean, you you're right, that that this was sort of the the impetus for us undertaking this and.
Yeah.
And then from from when we started talking about how to accommodate delivery, I went through and. With my with my fine-toothed comb in this whole section and and, uh, you know, found every place where it needed to be updated to align with the current regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's there's something else coming.
It's close enough, it's fine.
There's something else coming in the future, but we don't have to worry about it now.
Okay, we just need some to deliver. Um, that's what Will's gonna do afterward. You're gonna reach out, put that marijuana, the flashing marijuana leaf on the roof and go.
It's gonna be Shaw truce, right?
It's actually gonna be teal.
Teal.
Depending on how you look at it.
Alright, uh, last one is Article seven, and so this is for mixed use. Um, and so previously in uh neighborhood business and commercial business, those are the two districts? Yes?
Community business.
Community business, I keep saying that commercial. So neighborhood business, community business, there was no mixed use. Um, this seeks to allow mixed use uh through the special permit process. And this is primarily for, uh, you'll you'll see, you know, people try to do a business on the ground floor and rental units on the top floor. Um, so that's that's kind of the impetus for that.
Yeah, the board, the board had one, uh, one situation arise a couple of year, maybe a couple of years ago where. Uh, there was some, someone who had an apartment above a business in one of the, I forget which what district it was, but. You know, we we saw that the zoning bylaw had no, no way to accommodate that, but it just, it just seems to make perfect sense, particularly since we've. Uh, created the visit, the mixed use districts that explicitly allow it. Seemed seemed pretty straightforward to accommodate that in in these two districts.
Any questions on either of tho- any of those articles? You you don't need to vote anything here, because you're gonna vote to close the warrant and it'll be all encompassing in that vote.
Perfect.
Good?
Yep.
Now it can fade in the back, into the background again.
He'll be back, I'll say something. Thank you, Dave.
Alright, so up next, we can vote to close the fall town meeting warrant.
So moved.
I have a motion. In a second, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, I opposed, declare the motion carry. Um, and then we're gonna schedule town meeting logistics. Do we know if the town moderator has any dates in mind for this or?
I actually talked to her the other night about this, and she was the the Thursday. You know, meeting before town meeting, I think she's going to be.
October fifth.
Traveling.
Yeah, we we had met with her too, and she gave us her dates and then said October fifth is the.
Oh, okay.
It's your preferred date.
Oh, okay, good.
That's yon before, though, does that?
We can. We do try, you generally try to avoid um religious holidays.
Do you wanna um reach back out and bring this back on October fourth? Or is that gonna?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Or we, can we reach out to her?
We can, well, so you don't have to, you don't have to vote to set the meeting, so.
Yep.
We can go through the chairs and decide on one and, and do it. And it's really not mission critical that everybody.
No.
Is there, because we're just talking about the stuff we normally do and just making sure we don't drop the ball.
Okay, and do we know if we reached out to FinCom at all or we were just gonna?
Uh, I believe when FinCom met on Wednesday of last week, we discussed October fifth.
Okay. Oh, my mic didn't work. I would've told y'all.
I know.
It's a shame. Okay, so we'll, uh, put a pin in that for now and then, you know, as that. Information comes available, we'll just shoot it out to the board. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Good, good catch on Yom Kippur because we do try to avoid that. I think we just all missed it in that conversation.
Okay. All right, up next is retiree health coverage policy review. We'll tee that up to William.
Sure. All right, so as we continue to move through rewriting and updating our policy book, we have hit the probably two last light lifting ones. Uh, so to sort of encapsulate both of these, these are largely just refreshes and rewrites to put them into our current formatting. Uh, redoing some of the citations, making sure that it is all still compliant with MGL and citing the right statutes, uh, and making it look pretty.
And putting it online.
And putting it online, correct.
Excellent. All right, does the board have any questions about, I mean, can we do both of these at the same time about either the retiree health coverage plan or the tuition reimbursement policy? That's pretty much the same for tuition reimbursement, is right? Just.
For the tuition reimbursement policy, we did rename it. It was originally the schooling policy. I found that to be somewhat vague and didn't encapsulate what the policy was actually about.
Okay.
So we shifted the title.
Wonderful. I have a question on that one. Is the, so there's no limit on tuition reimbursement? Like a yearly limit or anything? There never was.
No, we didn't have one. I, I believe it's all discretionary.
Yeah, it doesn't say it in this.
Yeah.
We, uh, we don't, uh, put a price cap on it, but we do put a limit. It has to be a community, state college or equivalent at the undergraduate level.
Right, okay. I was just curious.
Oh, there's a typo there.
A good place to work.
All right. The town administrator has to approve all of it, so.
Yeah.
So. Mr. Richard did just point out that there is a typo in the educational reimbursement policy at the end of the first paragraph. So if you would like, we can fix that and bring it back to the next meeting to vote and sign.
Final, so you're saying final approvals by the town administrator and not the select board?
No, it just says this policy and then trails off.
We can, we can approve it contingent on.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, yeah.
You're, you're supposed to say the town administrator pointed out a typo with glee.
I felt like the with glee was evident in your tone of voice.
Sure was, man.
All right, any, any other, uh, questions or comments? If not, I can take a motion.
I move the board, the board vote to approve and sign the retiree health coverage policy. Um, as presented and approve and sign the tuition reimbursement policy, uh, as amended.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, declare the motion carried. Thank you again so much, William, for doing all of this. Um, up next is select board reports. Does anybody have any reports?
Um, yeah, uh, waste recycling reduction met, uh, last Thursday, reorganized, revised some of our goals. Um, everybody got homework and we scheduled our next couple of meetings.
Wonderful.
Also got to attend, uh, gazebo palooza over the weekend, which was wonderful. Um, fifteen bucks for basically like all you can eat Grafton snacks. Um, several restaurants in attendance. You could just, you know, go around and, and get your samples of, uh, all delicious treats that we have to offer. It was great.
Excellent. We had the ARPA committee meeting last night and just discussed further, um, we have a little bit of money left and talking about, you know, looking at, uh. Mental health concerns and, and trying to address that perhaps with some of the money, so. Our, our next mo- meeting is November seventh and, um, yeah, forging ahead. Awesome. Okay, and we can go on to town administrator reports.
Great. All right. So, uh, we're having our capital summit on Thursday. Um, we've been talking about that kind of, uh, ongoing. I did refine most of the agenda, um, in the last couple of days. We were spending a lot of time this year talking about return on investment and how to, uh, calculate whether or not it's better to own an asset or, uh. Utilize services in the private sector to do the work. Um, we're going to spend a lot of time on capital asset inventory. Uh, I will say I brought that up, uh, at the last meeting about how we don't have one. The departments have really been doing a lot of work in the background and did a great job of building out that initial pass. We're also going to be working with one of our consultants to do kind of a broader process after this budget year ends to really codify what we want in that. Capital asset list and, and make it a more usable document. Um, we're going to spend some time on, uh, understanding five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year approach to capital budgeting. Um, and how to capture things that are going to be beyond the five years and make sure that they don't fall off the radar. Um, and then we're going to go over current departmental submissions. So that's what we've got going on, on Thursday. Um, we've got TRICOM tomorrow night. Uh, we've got, uh, we're going to review the five-year projections that were presented to the board already. Um, we are looking to do a November first-ish, uh, budget kickoff. Um, initial presentations, uh, probably to FinCom somewhere in mid-December. Refine the budget in January and then go through the February, May process with the finance committee and the select board and get all of that, um. Ready to go for town meeting and get that approved. Uh, yep. So we, these are just ongoing tasks. I'm trying to keep you informed on. We're waiting the initial kickoff meeting for DE and I. Um, I would, I would not be surprised if we don't do that until November-ish, um, or late October. Um, water, uh, Westboro Road Water Main, you're, you're probably not going to hear anything about that for a, a bit. It's got to go through all kinds of different stages. Uh, town meeting prep, so, um, we completed the warrant this week, obviously, because you just voted to close it. And we're going to be having our logistics meeting. The I T R F P, we got eight or nine bidders?
Seven.
Seven bidders. Um, and we were, oh, we awarded it to CMD Technology Group. That's the group that we currently have. Uh, they were the most responsive, um, of the bunch. And, um, we're just awaiting the new contract start and then we will actually be getting, um. I mean, in, uh, we're going to see quite an increase in services, um, by going through that RFP process. So that's, that's pretty good. We are looking forward to that. Um. So ARPA committee, you, uh, just covered that. We are going to be coming back before the select board to amend a previous vote that you took. Um, I believe I explained this via a memo, uh, but just for the, the public watching at home. Um, we originally gave, uh, or allocated two point five million dollars for a HVAC improvement at the middle school. Um, we were able to get grants and an earmark to bring that cost down to two point two million. Uh, in the meantime, North Grafton Elementary lost a boiler that was about three hundred thousand dollars. So we're going to ask you to keep that money at two point five million, but just specify that we're using some for the HVAC at the middle school and some for the HVAC at. Uh, North, North Grafton Elementary. Yes?
The boilers at North Grafton Elementary, yes.
North Grafton or North Street, they go, they go.
Right.
They, they go very quickly. No- North Street, see, now we don't, we don't know. It's north somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a boiler. We have those facts. It's broken. It's broken. It, it, it's, it's no bueno. It's no bueno. Uh, I'm sure Jay knows where it is. That's, that's where I put all my faith.
He could turn it if he didn't.
It really would be. Although he, he, they did send me to the wrong school for, uh, no, no, that was Peter. Yeah, my bad. Because he also went to the wrong school. I remember now.
Bottom line, kids are going to be warm.
That's right. Yeah, we're going to make sure that they're warm.
Yeah.
Um, Office three sixty-five is, uh, moving right along. Uh, regional dispatcher just discussed and that's been on our, on our ongoing tasks. Um, we have the contract issued for the accessible door. I just signed it today. And so we're hopeful that we get that moving sometime in October-ish. Is that the timeline we had specified? Within thirty days of the contract signature.
Yeah.
So sometime in October, you'll start to see some, some movement there and we'll get that door electrified and, and replaced. It's going to be really cool. And then, uh, we've started gaining supplies for the senior center, uh, TV room upgrade. And so we're going to be, uh, it's going to be a great space. That's where I'm going to, it's going to try to have to find me down there. Be in there playing Wii all day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but no, it's, it's, uh, it, it's needs a refresh and we're excited about that project. It's a fun one, so.
Once it's all done, we should go down there and, uh, meet with them again.
Yeah.
We try to do. That'd be nice. Check it out and answer some questions.
Yeah, absolutely. That's it. I think that's all I got. Any specific questions any of you have for me on things that are going on?
Got some fresh pavement down on Weston today. It was, uh.
Looking good?
Yeah, very happy.
Yeah, when we went, we, uh, just went by there. It was looking nice. Looking nice. So making, making progress out there.
Perfect. All right, up next is correspondence. Do you guys have any correspondence you wanted to discuss?
Nope.
All right, uh, we have no resignations and we have public comment. I don't. See anybody in the audience that has public comment? How about on Zoom?
Nope.
Great, so now we can just take a motion for the meeting minutes.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for September thirteen, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I oppose, declare the motion carried. Uh, we don't have a reason to go into an executive session, so I can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? I oppose. Okay, declare the motion carried. Good night, everybody. Thank you.